All right. Good evening, Littleton. It's October 20th at 6:30 PM. Welcome to the Select Board meeting. We will get started with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chuck said he's five minutes out.
We have a fairly full agenda this evening. We'll start with the mail. We'll move on to Department Board updates, and that will include the Fire Department, the School Department, and Parks and Rec. We have a public hearing scheduled for 7 o'clock for an alteration for our wine and malt liquor license. 7:15 we'll move on to public input and members' updates. 7:30 we have appointments for the Clean Lake Committee. 7:35 Select Board discussion will include policy review of use of the common, town email addresses for the planning board, the Long Lake Dock discussion, we'll be voting to assign articles for the town meeting, and discussing a 40B application for Habitat for Humanity. We'll move on to the Town Administrator update minutes, and we will adjourn promptly at 8:55 at the latest.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Current vacancies on the town boards, we've got that are appointed through the Select Board: Agricultural Commission, Clean Lakes Committee, Committee for the Exploration of Real Estate Tax Relief for Seniors, Economic Development Committee, Master Plan Implementation Committee, Permanent Municipal Building Committee, Personnel Advisory Committee, Sustainability Committee, Zoning Vote of Appeals. Appointments by Littleton Electric Light and Water Department, they have an opening on their Finance Committee. We also have sign-ups to receive public notifications for the Town of Littleton: community impacts, public safety activity, town meeting changes, transportation issues, public health concerns, town events. You can scan the QR code on the screen or register at www.littletonma.org/subscribe. Stay informed. Select Board office hours: Wednesday, October 22nd from 4 to 6 with Mr. Rombacher; Friday, October 24th from 10 to 12 with Mr. Wilson; Tuesday, November 4th from 12:30 to 2:15, Chairwoman Morrison; Friday, December 5th, 12:30 to 2:30, again, Chairwoman Morrison. Okay, DPW, seeking snowplow contractors for the '25-'26 winter season packets available at the DPW office at 39 Air Road on the DPW website, or call 978-540-2670 for information. Rates begin at $100 an hour and up to $153 an hour depending on the equipment. Incentive signup bonus of $1,000. And we have a gift acceptance form from Liz Trediac. The name of the donor would like to remain anonymous. It's $1,000 for the outreach program, and that's it. Thank you very much for your donation. And I should have, I apologize, Madam Chairwoman, members of the Select Board, this great guy on my left-hand side is the town's new Assistant Town Administrator, Tony Souza, and we are, there is no one more excited here to have him here than me. And it's, this is fantastic, so please, anyone out there who is in Town Hall wants to drop by and say hello, please say hello. And that's it, Madam Chairwoman.
All right. Welcome, Tony.
Thank you.
Phil, you're here.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Department and Board updates. We'll start with the Fire Department. Also known as the troublemakers.
Thank you. As you know, through the memo that I had sent to you, on July 1st, we had an opening in our fire prevention position for the department. This brings the fifth change in our fire prevention position in five years. Due to this vacancy when it occurred, we looked at the position and really studied what the appropriate compensation was for the appropriate job description, and moved to make a captain of fire prevention after looking at some of our comparative communities, and again, reworking what the job description said. Through this process, we were in contact certainly with the union to ensure that we had no conflicts there. We worked with the Treasurer's Office to make sure that the money was there. However, one thing that we discovered after we had made the appointment was that there was some conflicting language that existed within mass general law. I know that that could be surprising, that there is conflicting language within law. So after we had made the appointment of Mike de Blasio to fire prevention, we said, hey, you know what? We should probably make sure that the board also approves this, because again, it's a little bit hazy as to whether it falls under the purview of what I can do, or whether we move it to the board. Looking at it, if we both approve it, then it checks all the boxes regardless of how you read the law. So with that, I'll answer any questions that anybody may have about the position.
No, I'll just say that I think this is a great, great idea, and I met Mike briefly at the employee party, Halloween party, and he's enthusiastic, and it's great. I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
He's a great guy.
Yeah.
Are there significant changes to the position other than salary that might make this more attractive to someone and have there be less turnover?
Yeah, so it does, I'm actually, I'm happy you asked that question. That's a great question. So we did look at the position, and part of what I have been working on is always having a succession plan for the department, making sure that we're creating avenues for success for each of our employees. So this gives yet another avenue of success. It gives us a little bit more backing with a few administrative functions simultaneously correcting the pay inequity that existed within fire prevention. So we're able to kind of deal with a couple different things within the Fire Department.
I looked at it from just the compensation, the HR point of view, and I know this wasn't one that had to come before the Personal Advisory Committee, because it's, what is it, Chapter 48, Section 42, gives you the authority?
Correct.
So I think it's, the part that got a little confusing was, it's a captain position, so, which, on Tier 3, I think, is that where?
Correct, yeah.
So that change alone made it a little bit more muddied than normal, so I think this is a great idea, having it just encased two years down the road, you know, if someone says, this didn't pass muster with the law. But that, you know, that chapter does state that the chief can hire and manage his workforce and your people, how you see fit, and it is not a new position. The position is already created, a captain rank is already created, so thank you for coming in front of us, though, because it's a...
Whereas we made it a captain of fire prevention, that's where captain existed, fire prevention existed, they didn't exist intertwined, and that's where the confusion really came in.
So thank you. It's great. And I, as well, like Captain de Blasio, he's done a lot for the community, and he continues to serve, and this is great, great for him, so.
Yeah, you just mentioned it, the whole way the confusion lied, that's where I had some confusion, but I'd like to echo what my colleagues have said, appreciate you coming before us, and just showing us our respect to come forward and make sure that it's not muddy. And I echo what everybody says about Mike to us around the other day, and just, he's a good guy. He's always got a smile on his face, and he's, from a community interaction standpoint, he's a testament to the department. So appreciate you coming before us, and look forward to seeing how it impacts your department.
Thank you.
I think it's a great hire. I just question what, all the other things that Mike was doing before, where, so he couldn't continue, or?
Yeah, so where he can, but he's also working with a few younger firefighters to try and get them interested in some of the other activities that he was doing, so hopefully we're going to create a lot of different opportunities for folks.
I think it's a great hire, and it's great to promote from within, so.
Child's safety seats. I mean, he was the big champion of that, so we know that those are...
He is, on a regional scale. It goes far beyond Littleton, which I think a lot of people don't know.
So we can't call him Car Seat Mike now anymore?
You can still go with that.
All right. You guys ready?
Good. All right, I'll move that the Select Board vote to approve the compensation of the captain of fire prevention.
Second. Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
School Department. Exemptions for Ted Doucette and Lisa Montgomery.
There was, Madam Chair, and the members of the Select Board, there was a typo in the, in the agenda, where it says 20D, it should be 20B. All of them should be 20B.
Okay.
Okay? And moving forward, as requested, and this is a housekeeping thing that you're all familiar with, with the exemption of these employees, but we do have Alicia here, if there's any particular questions or that you may have regarding that.
Can we blame Tony for that?
Oh, that's coming.
I had no questions at all. It all made sense to me.
I guess my question is, we've never said no to these, and I'm trying to find out, what is that criteria where you would flag one of these and say, this one could be tricky? What does that scenario look like?
Well, there could be some personnel-related issues, whether it be disciplinary or something like that, some concerns of the work-life balance, or the priority scale, so, yeah.
Alicia, did you have input from Parks and Rec?
Yeah. So the documents themselves, the 20D exemption, it has a list of requirements.
Yeah.
So I know from my personal experience, I'm not going to turn them in unless the people meet those requirements. So one of them is that they have to work under 500 hours in a year. Any work that they do for, I'll say, for our department, let's say, you know, we're doing one for Gwen. Currently, she's working in Tiger's Den, so any work that she does for us will have no crossover whatsoever. I'm not going to ask her to do stuff on school time, and schools will not ask her to do stuff on our time. So they're very separate things.
So I guess our question is, is this one of those things that we could pass on to the Town Administrator eventually, to where these are almost, these seem like they're screened by the department head, and then they're again screened by the...
They're definitely pro-form at this point.
So if it's allowed, maybe it's something we look at in the future to keep it, and you just inform us that we did it. I don't know.
That's a good idea.
I'm a little confused why Ted needs one, because he's working for the School Department as a soccer coach, and now he's going to work for the School Department as a referee.
Because they're two separate positions.
But they're within the same department.
Same game.
I thought we needed them when they were outside of your, I mean, if someone works for the high school and the middle school, we don't...
But they're two different, what are they called, accounting?
Line numbers? Pay number? Pay? Yeah.
I believe, I mean, that's...
Good point, though, I get it. Right, so the first one, usually it's interdepartmental, two different departments. This one's the same department.
Just like with the chief, though, I'd rather see it.
Yeah, no, right.
You know, make sure that it's signed off on, than...
I agree.
Assume a gray area is in our favor.
Good.
All right.
Move that the Select Board vote to acknowledge a disclosure by a municipal employee of financial interest in a municipal contract, and approve the exemptions for Ted Doucette and Lisa Montgomery as municipal employees in accordance with master and law Chapter 268A, Section 20 Bravo.
Second.
Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Excellent.
Next, we have an exemption for Lavinia Garcia, the School Department.
Yes, same.
Same thing.
Yes. All of the exemptions, the three separate exemptions before you are the same thing.
Anybody have any questions about Ms. Garcia?
No.
Okay. Let's go ahead.
All right, move that the Select Board vote to acknowledge a disclosure by a municipal employee of financial interest in a municipal contract, and approve the exemption of Lavinia Garcia as a municipal employee in accordance with master and law Chapter 268A, Section 20 Bravo.
Second.
Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any questions for anyone on Gwen Spatafino?
Nope.
Okay.
Moving on. Move that the Select Board vote to acknowledge a disclosure by a municipal employee of financial interest in a municipal contract, and approve the exemption for Gwen Spatafino as a municipal employee in accordance with master and law Chapter 268 Alpha, Section 20 Bravo.
Second.
Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor?
Aye.
We're a little early for the public hearing.
Wow. Let's jump around.
Yeah, let's do some updates.
Members' updates?
Yeah. Anybody want to volunteer to go first, or do I have to?
I can kick it.
All right, go for it, Gary.
Let's see. LCTV, so, thank you. Just want to let you know that as a member of the LCTV Steering Committee, and on behalf of the Director Mark Corry, we, there's, he put a lot of work into creating a Friends of Littleton Community Television, so those of you out there that are looking for a place to, we pretty much got it staffed, we have the board set up, and it is now ready to take donations. As you know, the cable usage is down, or about 47% of paying customers in the town are actually actively paying to use cable. That number is going in the wrong direction, as you know, as communities with all the streaming and different services. So I think the end result here, and not that this is going to happen, but we want to keep cable free for Littleton, you know, community television, and among other things, with things becoming more expensive, we know the benefit side becoming more expensive, so any way that we can support LCTV, just like you do with Friends of the Library, and Friends of Veterans, and Friends of the COA, this is another one of those things that could benefit greatly from your support. So just wanted to let you know that that was up and running, and will be, so keep your eyes out if you're looking to donate to a good cause. Let's see. Reminder, town meeting, I know we'll probably all say something to the town meeting on the 28th, next Tuesday, please, please come out and vote, and ballot November 1st, on that Saturday. Use of Indian Hill, I had already talked to Jim about, we're going to be going through some work on the use of the stage and that area, working with Jim, Park and Rec in schools to be able to make it available for the public to use in some capacity for different types of events, so that'll be coming forward after town meeting. Let's see, thank, congratulations Captain de Blasio, welcome Tony as well. The Point Cameras, Jim, I know we talked offline, but if you could kind of give an update on that, I know you...
Sure. I had reached out to the developer, the owner of the Point, especially with the most disturbing recent occurrence that happened there to a teenager, that installation of the cameras, never mind about the fires that happened at the charging stations for the Teslas. But, so, he has absolutely agreed to, there will be, there'll be cameras, and now, and I've put he and Chief Panard together to work out the logistics in regards to the monitoring. One thing that develops is, you know, we don't have the capacity of the monitoring, so, and the chief absolutely stepped right up and said, we're happy to monitor it, not a problem. And so that's how we're proceeding with that, okay?
Great.
Sam Park was absolutely, he was appalled at unfortunately the event, and is looking to support it.
Thanks. There are, we've, the Personal Advisory Committee, members in the HR office and Jim, are in receipt of the first, I guess you would call it draft, of the compensation intention, plan, the brief. We've been meeting, we met in groups to kind of discuss it, and some of the issues and things we're going to go back to the contract with, just to help work through some of those things, and then as, we're going to meet offline to decide how much of it we're going to use before we present it to the Select Board, and how much, we want to get our recommendations together for the Select Board, so we can see where we want to go for our May Town Meeting, and what that's going to look like, and what, most importantly, make sure that our, all the employees being treated equitably, but also to make sure that the town's on good footing financially to be able to support any type of changes to the compensation. Last thing I put on here, and it's been a while, obviously, I was out last meeting just the First Baptist Church, you know, I know, I believe there's a meeting coming up.
Next week.
Next week. So we'll be meeting with leaders of the First Baptist Church. For those that don't know, that the church, we're going to be looking for possibly community forums, some ideas of what we would like to see done with the church, you know, whether the town can get involved in ownership of that church, that's not really on the table right now, but it's something that we want to make sure we get out to the community and see what, you know, what we're thinking about for such a building that's iconic in the center of Littleton, so. Where that goes, you know, potentially with a nonprofit, or something else, somebody else taking over that church, that's kind of the goal, is be to try to keep it as iconic as possible, as you know, and not potentially having it end up as a parking lot, for instance, and things like that. We need to see if there's protections that we can put into place. So we're continuing to meet with church leaders, and there'll be more to come on that. So I know that's a lot, but I've been out a while, so, thank you.
Who's next?
I'll go. So I attended the Charter Committee Forum last week, it was very well-attended. There were a lot of questions and feedback from the audience, there was talk about what, like, how to do town meetings going forward, and also general feedback on how boards should be structured in the reporting, so I thought it was a good forum and well-attended, so thank you for everyone that came out, and I think there'll be another one sometime in the spring, most likely, but it sounds like they made good progress and got a lot of good feedback. I went to the Legislative Breakfast, there was in Chelmsford, it was actually held at their Chelmsford Performing Arts Center, which is the old Town Hall, so, which kind of, when you walk in, looks like a Baptist church. So there was a lot of information coming from that. They're still working to finalize the Municipal Empowerment Act, which will allow remote meetings to be enshrined forever. Right now, they're keep renewing whether you can do remote or hybrid meetings. There was talk of the state setting up a pilot to allow remote town meetings, so I don't know if we want to try and get in on that pilot, or eligible or not. There was a lot of talk about how schools will be funded and reevaluating, they upped the minimum reimbursement to $150 per student, and they pointed out that that's like, less than one percent, that's about 1% of the cost of educating kids around here. The other big one that came up is the Cannabis Control Commission is finalizing, potentially fairly soon, regulations around allowing public cannabis use. Communities will have to opt in to that, and then, there's actually three types of use, I don't remember what they, there's like, use on-site at the cellar, where they could have, and then there's like, off-site events, and there's one other one. They will need an HCA with a community, but there's a lot of things to be really concerned about with what they said so far, like, it didn't sound like it was as baked as like, one-day liquor licenses for events, so stay tuned and pay close attention, because we might want to start weighing in on some of those things. Finally, Andy Curran and I are going around and marking more of the town monuments, we're going to do some, we're going to do all the ones with Boxborough, and some of the ones with Westford this week.
You mean the boundaries?
The boundaries, yeah.
How many have you found?
So Boxborough, I think we found seven of the eight. We were looking, we spent a long time looking for the markers that are on Lake Manawanniki and the Westford Grotten, but it turns out that we believe those are underwater, so that's why we could not find one, so.
Scuba mark?
Yeah. It requires special paint, so.
I, my only update is that I attended the Orchard Open House, which is now called the Hopewell Native Tree Farm. Still, it will always be the Nogok Orchard, of course, but it was very well-attended. I think when I was there, there were over 50 people there. Jamie Eldridge showed up, they had music, they had DJ, there was food and drink, it was, and all the demonstrations of all the work that John is doing with the farm, with the orchard. And the place looks really good, he's cleaned it up a lot.
It's pretty impressive.
It's, and I just was struck again by his vision, and the sort of care he's taking with that place, so I feel lucky that we have him, and I want to encourage anybody, he talked a lot about education, he really wants to spend a lot of time doing, helping people to figure out how they can help, you know, plant trees and assist the environment. So, it's all good.
Great.
And medicinal cacao is delicious.
Okay.
Yeah. Just go for it.
I thought you looked healthy.
All right. Chuck?
Yes, thank you. Just to piggyback on the town meeting next week, there is one more Shaker Lane School Community Forum tomorrow evening at 6:30 at the school, at Shaker Lane School, and there is, for those that are concerned be sitting at town meeting, those resources are available. There is a sign-up online, and it's a huge, like, but if you, Shaker Lane School, there's an opportunity for you to sign up online. Tomorrow night, I think we all got invited to Littleton Business Association as a gathering, the folks at Dirigible have joined the LBA, so they're kind of doing a kickoff Oktoberfest kind of thing, so I do plan on attending that and, you know, interacting with the business owners that are in the LBA. Last Thursday, I did attend, at Littleton High School, a lip sync fundraiser competition, and the benefits went to the Model UN and the Drama Club, so they split the proceeds, and it was actually a really fun event, the kids, the kids did a great job, it's...
Did you win?
What'd you say? Sorry, did you say? I did Milli Vanilli, nobody got it.
I always thought you was a Snoop Dogg person.
Well, I signed us up next year for Jake and Elwood Blues. Let's see, just relative to the, we haven't really made any kind of an update on the tax relief for seniors. I did speak to a couple seniors over the weekend, and actually, I spoke to their mother yesterday, just to get her perspective as a senior in another community, and what we're doing seems to be better than what her community's doing, not that, it's pretty, I want to raise that bar, so I have reached out to a couple of other colleagues that we've met through the MMAs and stuff like that, just to say, for instance, Barstool is one that is pretty active. So I do hope to have more updates on that, and we're going to get the band back together again, and keep that ball moving.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so you already mentioned the final tour for Shaker Lane tomorrow at 6:30. For my colleagues, our goals update draft was distributed, and I'd like to post those on Friday.
Okay.
So if you have feedback, please let me know prior to that, and if need be, I'll send out another draft, but otherwise, they're getting, they're getting posted on Friday. Trunk or Treat is coming up Saturday from 6 to 8 PM at the Alumni Parking Lot, so it's always really well-attended. Bring yourself, bring some friends, it's always a great event. Let's see, we've got, oh, I did a podcast with our moderator about how to do, how to do town meeting, how to attend a town meeting, and he, of course, had... And he, of course, had good insights and it was a good discussion. I also went to the Charter Committee Forum on October 14th. I would encourage anybody who's even a little bit interested in understanding how everything works in terms of Littleton and government to, to check it out. They, not only did they talk about where they want to go, but they also talked about where we are. And a lot of people, you know, were asking clarifying questions that were really helpful. So until we have that Citizens Academy launched, in the meantime, that would be a great crash course for anybody who's interested in understanding town government. Let's see, I went to the Shaker Lane Building Committee Meeting on the 15th. I just can't say enough about how hard everybody on that committee is working and it's much appreciated. Want to congratulate the Littleton Tigers. They won their homecoming game on Friday night. So that was wonderful and I know the high school kids had a great time at homecoming dance the next night. Let's see, there was a Shaker Lane Building Committee Outreach on Saturday. I was not able to attend that one. Yeah, but, so I don't know how, I didn't get an update on attendance for that. And then I was told, sort of through the grapevine or, or, you know, that I've heard that there are a couple of our committees that have records stored in people's homes. So I think we probably need to start identifying some storage space here in Town Hall so that we don't, you know, lose everything if, if somebody decides to leave Littleton and take their, take their records with them. We'd be losing a lot of really important information, so I'd like, I'm going to start working on trying to get all those records moved somewhere here in Town Hall.
That's something that's even become a bigger problem as we, so many of our boards still, and committees are almost exclusively virtual.
Yeah.
Seems, is this more?
Yeah, then, then they're even less likely to have records here for, exactly.
I mean, since, since that, most, most everything that goes back and forth is digital now.
Yeah.
Other than minutes or generations.
So, and that's all I have. Okay, 7:04, we can kick off the public hearing.
Am I reading this thing or what?
Yeah. Can you open up the hearing?
If you have it failed on the floor. This whole thing? Yeah. Okay. Let's see. This is a reference public hearing, alteration of license premises, Energy North Incorporated, 256 Air Road, Littleton, Mass. The Littleton Select Board will conduct a public hearing on Monday, October 20th, 2025 at 7:00 PM, Littleton Town Offices, Room 103, 37 Chattock Street, Littleton, Mass, to act on the request to, for approval of an alteration of a licensed, on license premises under Master and Law, Chapter 138, Section 15, submitted by Charbel Dogger, Manager, Energy North Incorporated, 256 Air Road, Littleton, Mass. We have the dates and we need to get into that? Probably not. I think we're good. So the hearing is open.
All right.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Select Board, Town Administrator, Assistant Town Administrator. My name is Harley Racer. I'm an attorney at Rich May. I represent Energy North Incorporated. And we are here tonight to request this, from the Select Board, as the local licensing body of the liquor license, an approval for an alteration of a license premise. We were here before this body in March, before this board in March of 2025 to obtain approval for the license of off-premises alcohol sales of wine and malt liquor. We, and we obtained that application. We're now seeking approval to alter 256 Air Road by ultimately demolishing the current structure and rebuilding a new facility that will be 6,300 square feet, single-story, convenience store with two quick-service restaurants and a built-in cooler and beer cave. So we request the approval of these alterations to maintain our license to sell the off-site alcohol in the same way that we do now for the continuation and duration of the demolition and the rebuilding and still have the license be valid when we get to the other side of that. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have. We did submit our application and I believe everything that was requested of, of the board.
I have really two simple questions. I, I know, I think it's a good thing, it's, it looks like the plan's going to be a much nicer visual anyway, but the gas station is remaining a gas, it would still be pumping gas. And do you own the parking across the street as well? Is that?
I.
Used to be parking across the street, I don't know, trucks used to park in there and things like that?
We all know, I was in bad, but.
Not the parking that's across?
Right.
Okay, because I was going to, I was just thinking if that was the case, then we, we would need to be looking probably at more crosswalk type stuff there, but.
Yeah, no, my understanding is it's all on that side of the, of the road.
Okay.
And we are in the process of getting DOT approvals to move forward and get the permits. We need to start the demolition and, you know, and then get the building permits.
There is, when, when Willow Street, Brew Street and Air Road were all reconfigured, there is a light that has told you, so I'm sure that DOT is going to say, make sure that your egress going to the right is going to be using that light.
It's a five-headed light.
If they're not, I'm sure that our, our PDS.
Yeah, my understanding is that, and I've, I've not been in touch with DOT, but my understanding is that the DOT process, it still has a few months to go before we get that finalized and approved.
Is the building, the plans for the building basically what was in front of the planning board six months ago?
It is, and if you look, there's a floor plan in the application that's a concept plan. This isn't the architectural renderings and those will be changed and will be before whatever permitting body is required. By the time we get the building permit and site plan approval if necessary near the permits, but it is substantively the same as what we were presenting then.
And what's the hope on the schedule?
The hope on the schedule is, I, I've been told seven months for DOT approval and so demolition will start sometime next year and the construction will take six to seven months. Don't hold me to that, but that's the, that's the timeline that we are working with.
So this time next year, we can attend your grand opening, right?
Okay. Hopefully, that would be.
Great.
Great, we're there.
So Attorney May, the, just the way you worded, selling licenses there right now and being the ability to sell during the demolition, that's, I misunderstand that?
Yeah, we're not, we're not looking to sell during the demolition, it's to, it's so that our license remains valid, once we rebuild, we still have it.
So it doesn't lapse.
So it doesn't lapse, correct.
Wouldn't be an abandonment, it's an improvement. Wouldn't be an abandonment.
But it's exactly the same license in every other respect.
Correct.
Got it.
Same hours, same.
Actually, you're going to have like, plastic walls up and stuff like that, like building one part of it.
A roadside stand.
I'm sure the place the fire would say.
I was thinking one of those like fireworks tents, you know?
It's a bunch of coolers.
Halloween spirit, but with beer.
Perfect. Different type of spirit.
Okay. Nothing for me either.
All right, so I have an overall consensus of positivity. Seems like, all right, we'll read that side. Move that the Select Board.
Wait, we have to, we have to ask.
Oh, I'm sorry. We do, correct, thank you.
Thank you.
Hold the motion, please.
Any public input? Hearing none, we'll continue.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
By Gary, right? Seconded by Matthew. Chuck?
Chuck's eye.
Gary?
Gary's eye.
Matthew's yes.
Mark's yes.
Karen's yes.
Okay. Okay, on with the motion. Move that the Select Board vote to approve the application for an alteration of premises, wine and malt, off-premises license under Master and Law, Chapter 138, Section 15, for Energy North, Inc., 256 Air Road, for the hours of Monday through Friday, oh, excuse me, Monday through Saturday, 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM, alcohol sales 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and Sunday, 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM, alcohol sales 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
Second.
Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew.
Let me continue. Issuance of license is subject to AB/CC approval of alternat, altercation of premises.
Second as amended.
As amended, thank you.
Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew. Do we need to roll call this one? All right, Chuck?
Chuck's yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Matthew?
Mark's yes.
Karen's yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Guys, good luck, good luck in the process, thank you.
Yeah. Looking forward to seeing it.
Thank you for your investment.
All right, we've got our members' updates completed. Public input.
Mr. Public.
Rob Brans, 25, June 4th, have a few, try to be brief. Beer spore approached Littleton Conservation Trust, expressing, displaying a number of photos and concerned with regard to trees that she views is pretty significant. And I know I've heard you folks speak about some trees at 550 King Street, so I've reached out to Steve Witton, tend to get to Shade Tree Committee, Matt Cahill. I'm charged with trying to bring together a group of folks, so should you have trees, should you know of people that have interest in these, you know, important trees throughout the, I've talked to John Bransfield as well, trying to get a group together to consider, I don't know, I want to say an inventory of them, that could be pretty extensive and expensive, but to get trees of note. So you folks have numerous contacts, I encourage you to engage with Steve Witton or Matt or myself, because I think we're going to, you know, take this forward in some, some way, somehow. Also, think you're going to receive several invitations, if you haven't already, for a Dark Skies presentation, a guy from MIT, it'll be November 5th, Senator Chattock Street, 7:00, 8:30. The intention is that we're going to be, I've seen the presentation about two years ago, it's, it's counterintuitive. I think we're all trained to believe that significant light enhances safety and enhances visibility and that is, he'll go through, are your rods in your eyes, that's just not, he's from Pepperell, they actually led a successful campaign to basically dim the lights with police safety perspectives on board, saying yes, save money through less utilization, et cetera. Littleton Light will be there as well, right? So just want to give you a heads up, should you be able to, be able to make that one.
Excuse me.
What was the date?
On November 5th.
Thank you.
November 5th, 7:00, 8:30 at the Senator on Chattock Street. Correct.
That's right.
Yep, thank you. The, just because you mentioned the senior deferral, I think it's a great program, appreciate the efforts that are underway. Took the opportunity of seeing Senator Eldridge at the Orchard the other day. There's a wrinkle in it, and I encourage you folks, as you're attending the Legislative Breakfast, the wrinkle in, from my opinion, you folks are great. You've got this program that I think we should take the opportunity at town meeting to take a moment to probe, bumping it up from the 55,000 threshold to $72,000 threshold, that's great, and you only charge a 1% interest rate. So for seniors that are really challenged, this can be a great thing to defer $1 to every dollar of their property taxes. And it's only a 1% interest rate until you die. And then it cranks up immediately to 16%. And then there's onerous language saying, six months after death, you can start to take actions with regard to a house and play. And those, you know, Senator Eldridge seemed to really be responsive with regard to, yeah, that doesn't sound, you know, like we want to do it. So I want to bring that to your attention because you mentioned. Last thing for me is with town meeting coming up, kudos. I know a number of you put in a lot of time to get it done. I know you received assistance from school superintendent Clancy. Last time, I heard, I was there on Saturday. As of Saturday afternoon, there were 50 children registered for the childcare that night. I think that really says something with regard to you, you put it together very, very quickly. It seems like it's really being responded to very, very well. So between Mark mentioning this potential pilot program of remote, my understanding is it's been since 2014 that we had a review of town meeting from the standpoint of a voter involvement. So let me make this disclaimer. I am not speaking as a member of the Charter Review Committee. I'm speaking solely as a resident, resident who has done extensive canvassing in the last month. And the feedback is, I'm not saying it's majority, far from it, but it's a vocal minority who, yes, I'm voting for the Shaker Lane for the November 1st ballot, and no, I am not attending town meeting. And then it's a pretty good problematic list of reasons why. And there, there's no conversation that I can do other than, you know, if we were to change it somehow so you can get it out faster, would you attend?
Yep.
If you can get it faster, contact me, but otherwise, I'm not coming. So I would encourage you to, one, do a review of this upcoming meeting after the fact with regard to what worked well, what's different. It seems to me like we put a lot of energy into getting people. I think they're being responsive, a lot of the childcare. And it might be time to resurrect, you folks to resurrect a specific group to consider possible voter input with regard to potentially tweaking aspects of town meeting or the town meeting report, or things that essentially you did in 2014 to try and make it better. I think the world's changed dramatically. I think COVID, remote, all those sorts of things. I think it's maybe time to review it again, much like you came to the conclusion it was time to review town government every eight to 10 years with charter, et cetera. So, thank you.
At the Charter Committee Forum, there was a lot of discussion from the audience about how to improve town meeting and what they wished we could do.
We're so, we're so bound by Master and Law and a lot of it. Time is one of the things we do have control over. And that's, I know, you probably had discussion before at 6:00 PM, maybe that's a survey-type question we put out to people. Who's by making it 6:00, where people now can't get there?
From work.
From work or, you know, so that's, but it's worth a.
Yeah, ideal start time.
It comes up, yeah.
Because an hour is a lot, especially if we're front-loading these, like, things like a school, some of the big projects, if we're front-loading it at Article One or Two, you know, that's, you might be out of there by eight, that's a big difference for people that have kids at school on a Tuesday night, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Thanks.
Anybody else from public input?
I'm just going to jump on the back of it.
Sure, yeah.
Certainly want to try to, after every town meeting, we have like a murder board, post-mortem, pardon me?
Post-mortem.
Yeah, we call them autopsies.
Exactly. Just to see, you know, where we, where we could have done things differently, that kind of thing, and I think that's important, though we continue to do that. I have noticed that, the time that I've been on the board, that many of the people that are the loudest at Facebook, on Facebook more than anything, they don't come to our meetings either, don't show up to town meeting. They have every reason as to how we should do it differently, but they don't show up at town meeting and some of them aren't even registered to vote, so I just want to put that out there.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Do the best for the most.
Moving along to appointments. Appoint Gerald Cavalo to the Clean Lakes Committee as the Mill Pond alternate. Gary, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I should probably bring something up.
Yeah.
So on the application, I put down four things that I intended to do if I was appointed to those. And so some of them might be a little controversial, I don't know if you looked at them.
Yeah.
But the other one is that it says, according to the rules on the Clean Lake Committee, that the alternate, which is the only position that's currently open, has to be nominated by the Mill Pond Association. I'm not aware that there is such an organization, I have to call into John Folsom and Mick Wanzer, haven't gotten back to me yet on it. But there is one difference that may make that not necessary, and that is that Mill Pond, unlike all the other lakes, is an impoundment. And so it's not a great pond in terms of, if you look at all the other lakes in town, it doesn't show the land subdivisions, but under Mill Pond, it shows who owns the land, and it's the town of Littleton owns about 60% of the land, Conservation Trust owns about 20, and then some overlap from the neighbors. So just, I brought this up with the town clerk today and she thought I should come and talk to you guys about it, that if you appointed me, I think, because I'm a resident of Littleton, I do have an interest in, in, in the lake because I am paying taxes and the land belongs to the town under the impoundment. So therefore, I think. So therefore, I think, I think I should be appointed.
Logic falls for me. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, if we get slapped on the wrist, we'll beg forgiveness.
Yeah, exactly.
You're here.
Is there anyone else who represents Mill Pond on the Clean Lakes Committee?
That wants him.
Yeah, they want him.
Okay.
I did call him, I know him pretty well, but he hasn't hit back to me yet.
I suspect he is the committee that would nominate.
All right, thanks so much for stepping up, Jerry. Let's go ahead.
Move that select board vote to appoint Gerald Cavalo to the Clean Lakes Committee as the Mill Pond alternate for a term expiring June 30th, 2027.
Second.
Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
Thanks very much.
Get sworn in.
Go see Diane.
All right, moving on to discussions, policy review of use of Littleton Common. Mark, take it away.
Yeah, so we've been kicking this around for a few meetings now. I started a draft that, due to my schedule, I didn't get this out in time to be in the packet, but everyone has a copy of what the old policy was and some changes I was proposing. This is going to take several meetings to get through. Town Council hasn't looked at this. We need to actually go through the normal, you know, introduce and approve in separate meetings. But if people take a look and give me their comments back, I'll take those and do an updated draft and send it off to town council so that we can continue this process. It's an incredibly difficult policy to write, because you want to protect the town without infringing on people's right to gather. So it's, yeah, it's just difficult to find that balance, so.
I appreciate your approach of, like, only require permit under certain conditions. I think that's the right way to go. And I definitely support that. I would add, try to make sure that all of the things that fire and police check now are in the list of prohibited things, like, I know that they said, you know, don't put any stakes in the ground, because they don't want irrigation pipe damage. So I think that when you say, you know, the users agree not to obstruct fire lanes in case of emergency, like, let's have a list there of things you can't do.
I'll run this by police and fire.
That's the only, but I think that's my only comment right now.
I had some language suggestions that I'll just send to you, but I do think one thing we wanted to consider is, you know, what is the result of a failure to comply with those conditions in the first section?
Yeah, that's a good point. Town flogging.
Yeah, you know, I thought, for example, a failure to clean up, it might be, and all this has to go by town council, of course, but a charge to the sponsoring organization or individuals for direct costs incurred. So if we have to clean things up and, you know, lug out a bunch of mattresses or something bizarre here, you know, that we can, we can try to recoup those costs. And I think another reasonable consequence would be, and it would, I would want it structured as a may, but just holding the right to, that that potentially would impact their ability to get a permit in the future. I think we should make the list of permit reasons. I would change, I would just add that it's for unofficial events, right, so that we don't want to have to seek permits for things that we're organizing ourselves as the town. I think, again, I've got some language suggestions. I think an amplified sound system would be a reasonable addition. I would remove the number of people that are expected to attend. I think that's better addressed with a statement that if attendance is expected to exceed whatever number we think is reasonable, and I'm sure the chiefs have thoughts on that as well. Organizers are strongly encouraged to submit a permit application so that the town can provide guidance and assistance on logistics such as parking and traffic control. I just don't, I'm worried about having a number, because there's so many people and so many cases in which somebody will look at that and say, well, I don't know. I don't know how many people are coming.
Absolutely true, yep.
And I'm worried that that's going to, you know, chill, have a chilling effect on public speech.
So I actually did some research, a little bit of research on this, and I didn't spend a lot of time, but like, to use the, to have a free speech gathering on the National Mall, if you have more than 25 people, you have to have a permit, right? So, so the idea that you have a number is not unprecedented by them.
There's many communities in Massachusetts that have it.
I have not done other research on what other communities do. It's very, yeah, it's not a trivial thing. And I agree that it's hard to say, oh, you know, well, we're only expecting 24 people, so, and then 26 show up, and there's all those weird border cases that we're always going to have, so.
I agree with Karen, though, on if you leave it without a number, it gives some flexibility to, you know, what are the police, all right, let's just talk about a, we used a plant sale as an example, but someone selling things on the common in that regard, where people are coming and going all day long, as opposed to an event where everybody shows up and everybody leaves.
How many people is that?
So it gets a little crazy, but I think giving flexibility to, okay, well, what type of event is it? It does play a role in what we're expecting.
And resources.
For, yeah, for safety, for a lot of other things.
Do we require police details?
That's the other piece.
Based on a number.
At what point do you require a police detail? Is it, and what if it's a reactionary-type police detail? Gets larger than we expect it, then we have to call someone in to do that.
Just say that in terms of the National Mall, or anywhere else, you know, it's helpful and it's instructive, but the way that these laws are viewed is to the specific circumstances of our town, our common, and its historic use and its future use. So we just need to be careful that we can't, we can't do a cut and paste, or assume that because it was okay in one circumstance, it would be okay in our circumstances. Okay.
Yeah, I, I'm one of those that will go to the First Amendment rights and work backwards from there, right? What, everything that we do takes away potentially from that. So we want to keep in mind, what are we doing it for? Safety is the number one concern here, period, right? After that, it's what comes after safety? Probably nothing.
Damage to infrastructure.
Right, and the cost, is there going to be a cost to the rest of the community to support this event? Those type of things, but other than that...
For example, there were 300 people on the common, I think the estimate was on Saturday. Zero impact, as far as I could tell, and on traffic or anything else. So I just don't know where we would figure out that number and how we could apply it.
And do we stem this? I know somebody had mentioned last time we discussed this. Sure, we had, in a common, definitely some type of policy like this, just limited, what are we talking about, other town property as well? Has to have some type of a, I mean, this works well on the common, because that's, our common especially, is the focal point of an enormous amount of traffic and other things. But with this, I think we'll probably tail this up with some of the language that we create in here. Maybe we put it on to the backend of, well, this really could, any town-owned property, we might want to have this, no X, you can't have this.
Yeah.
Can't have that.
Yeah.
So I wonder if this document should also help protect us from malicious people who want to, you know, skirt the law and like, cause trouble, and then keep coming back and doing it over and over and over. Maybe, maybe that's better handled by the police. But if they have a policy they can point to saying, you know, if you are deliberately impeding traffic, or if you were, not that, because that's already illegal, but if you are deliberately, you know, like, provoking people or whatever on the common, you know, we have the right to ask you to leave, and if you don't, then we're...
It's such a hard thing, because everybody's feelings are different, right? What's provoking you, my tolerance might be much higher.
No, I understand. I mean, I'm not going to, I don't want to step on free speech. I'm just trying to think of, maybe, maybe we don't need to handle that in this policy.
So one of the reasons I was thinking of a number was not because of the 300 people or whatever, it was like, there's a limited amount of parking at the common, and once you get outside of the number of designated parking spots, then, then we're going to get in, someone's going to have to get involved and say where you are allowed to park on the outside of that. And it would be good to have, if you are expecting that number of people, then we can kind of direct that without putting it in a policy that you can park on, you know, Jennifer Street but not Goldsmith Street, because once those things are in a policy, they live forever, and they're really hard to change.
I mean, when we have an event on Fay Park, we have do-not-park signs all the way up Foster, right? So that would, that would be a concern, but I think, I'd like to reach out to, I have a couple of communities that I researched that actually have the number. I just want to know, was the, was it arbitrary? Why 25? You know, why 50? Why 100? I mean, just get an answer. Maybe there was some other, something we're missing behind the number.
That would be helpful.
This is, this is a great start, though, Mark.
Thank you.
Thanks.
If I have a couple comments, just to piggyback on, with Matthew with the stakes, I think that we can identify where sprinkler lines are and that kind of thing. I'd rather see at least cinder blocks or something, because we've seen it at election day. You know, a wind comes along and those tents can cause damage, especially if you're surrounded on all three sides by roadways. So if people are putting up tents, I think we should have some sort of a...
Must-be-stake.
Some safety.
Yeah, structure.
You can't stake it down because of the irrigation. So it has to be, we know where the irrigation runs, though, so that's, I mean, we could, so if it can't be staked, then it needs to be weighted.
Weighted, that's a good...
Yeah, weighted down, just, there should be something from a, from a safety perspective.
So since the structure requires a permit, would that go on the permit, or would that go in the policy? I would say it does.
Yeah.
Seems like a structure to me.
I'd have to take a look at what the gardeners...
Yeah, I think, I think if, I think if they're going to put up a structure, they should have a permit.
I mean, the way it's written right now is if tents or other structures. So right now, it definitely includes tents.
We're not talking log cabins and stuff.
No.
You never know. I'm sorry, tune it up.
The only, just piggybacking on your, how do we go back at them if they, you know, if it was left a mess or whatever, if we had to invest something to make it whole again? You know, anytime we stay in a hotel or we rent a car, you put down incidentals, so they're running your credit card for whatever, $75, $300, whatever the number is, for incidentals, which you get returned to you as soon as you check out of the hotel, so you return the vehicle and it's in good, it's in good condition. We could potentially do something like that. I don't think the town really wants to get into the business of running credit cards like that.
Right, right.
But who's three sponsors?
But maybe that's where the insurance comes in.
Yes, yes, I agree. But maybe we could put some sort of a rider on the insurance, I don't know. It's, the other thing that I would like to be mindful of is the Veterans Corner. We've invested a lot of resources and a lot of money in making sure that the Veterans Corner is solemn and is, looks good. I, I would be in favor of putting like a low, almost looks like a wrought iron fence, but a low, just to designate that that is different than the rest of the common. It is, it is kind of our sacred ground, if you will. So that's something I would like to try to, I don't think it's going to be, going to be addressed in a policy, but I would like to say, because there were people, without malice, just people walking through it, just not knowing that it's there, you know? Whereas if there is something that procludes you from walking through, I think it would just, I think it would look nicer to frankly, to designate our Veterans Corner. So that's the only, the only other point that I wanted to make.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Anybody else?
Yeah, thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Mark. Review the request for the use of town email addresses for the planning board. Got some math in the packet, if I recall.
Well, in here is, it is a proposed use of, it's not, doesn't fully comply with the request from the planning board, but it streamlines and it has everyone that would be consistent that boards and commissions and committees that have town staff, they would be sent directly to the town staff as Board of Health at LittletonMA.org, and it goes to that individual, or planning board at Littleton, it would go to say Marin, or if she designates Cooper, and then that would be distributed to the, to the members on the committee, whether it be all of them, or if it's, it's just to a specific member of the committee. And that, and I know that it's been pointed out that the Board of Health, they have individual ones, but there is, there has been a lot of lack of attention to those email addresses, whether it be through, through training, or, and, and that was done originally, that was put in place because of Nishoba, and there was no health director. Now we have a health director, which would be able to take that and eliminate those five, and just have the one that would go, that would go directly to Francis. And I know that the center, not the center, the Charter Review Committee, they all have, in hindsight, that probably, probably was not the best approach, but there is a sunset to those email addresses individually. But you see in other areas within, within the government, such as the Sustainability Committee, then they don't have town staff, it is not staffed by town, by any town employee. So it, at this point right now, until such time as it would be staffed, it goes to the chairperson, and then that chairperson can distribute. So that is, and there's, there's a number of different reasons. There's security reasons, there is, there's the maintenance, the issues that is pointed out from our IT, from IT. And of course, there is the expense.
I mean, everybody, I...
I personally feel that all committee members on all boards should have a town email address, right? That's my...
Completely the opposite.
I, it's ridiculous that we don't, right?
Have the individual?
Yes. Everyone should have their own individual address, right? There should also be a group address, potentially, right? But just to pick on the Board of Health, let's just say everything went to Francis, and Francis is on vacation, now the Board of Health doesn't get any email, right? Everything's now filtered through one individual, how are you going to? Everyone needs their own address, either, either through the town, or you have to set up a personal, you know...
Forwarding.
Forwarding, so that you don't, you don't want your town business in your personal mailboxes, right? You just, for a whole FOIA and everything else, right? It's just too complicated. We are effectively running a business with these, these are effectively the equivalent of our employees, and we should be giving them email addresses.
So you think, like, Sustainability Committee, Clean Lakes Committee, Shade Tree Committee, Cemetery Commission, all those folks, every single member, every single person on all those committees should have a...
I do.
...email address at 32 dollars a month?
I don't, first, I think we should look at cheaper options, because I don't think $32 a month is a reasonable, a lot of these things are...
And all the training that goes with it.
Right, and all the training.
You know, I did, once again, I researched this a little bit, and the only communities that I saw where people had individual emails on those type of boards, planning board specifically, were the much larger communities, like Cambridge, 121,000 people.
But those, those are employees, the school committee.
Right, to some, yeah, but I just, I mean, I'm on the other side of it, I guess, than Mark. I'm, you have a planning board, in this case, a planning board email collective that you can forward to your personal email address. You know, I have, I have five personal email addresses. You know, you're allowed that with Comcast, wherever it's Comcast. You know, you're allowed that with Comcast, wherever it's Comcast. And, you know, one of them, you can create town business, Gary Town Business email on it. It, you know, it'll go into that if I need it. So, I don't, I don't think that's an excuse. I think, I, I know what you're saying by it's the collective. If someone's monitoring it and only one person, stuff's gonna go unanswered. That's not what I'm saying at all. I'm saying if you want it to go to the board members, then they need to have a forwarding address where it can go to. The cost is, is a part of this, but I think everybody should be monitoring that, that group email. If you're on a board, you.
You can't. That violates open meeting.
What do you mean?
If everyone.
If you're responding, if you're responding.
If everyone's reading that email address, and then, if everyone's reading that one email address, and then can be responding to that email address, then you can be carrying on conversations on that one email address.
But it's.
It's an open meeting.
It's the same type of thing that we have, Jim, if we need to do polling through us individually. We individually respond to Jim with that, with.
Or we're aware enough to say.
We don't get to debate each other on any of those, we don't see it, but we're responding to.
But if everyone's monitoring, if everyone's monitoring one email address, then, then it is an open meeting.
Well, we're all monitoring Select Board at LittletonMass.org.
Select Board is a group. It's not an email address. If everyone.
But from exterior, from the exterior, there's no difference. Functionally, no, there isn't. It's going to five individual email addresses.
Right.
Just like forwarding to five, like, like an email would forward to five.
But it's much different than if we had one email address, and then I can write a draft in that email, and then you can go and read that draft, right, without it ever being.
And the sent emails, right? You can see what everybody else has said about something.
It's a much.
Oh, I thought we were just, they were just forwarding.
No, but if everyone's going and monitoring one email account.
Yeah, but, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. When, when I say monitoring, I thought you meant, like, the email comes into that single email address, and then is forwarded to five individual emails.
And we're putting, I think we're putting more effort into this when we're talking collective, not a collective, but a, at, planning board at LittletonMass.org. Who's monitoring it? If it's the chair, that's the chair's responsibility to monitor that. If they're not gonna be available, you pass it on, the vice chair now is responsible this week for monitoring that email. You know what I mean? So, I don't think that's a, a big excuse. I, I see more issues with pipelining people into this. Now, I can, I'm reaching out to one individual to get answers. And that's not what you really want either, is someone reaching out to planning board number five to get something from, when it should, the whole board should be seeing it.
But there are lots of times when I have a conversation with someone on the planning board, and some of them have, you know, specific email accounts for their planning board business, and some don't. And like, I'm thinking about, you know, FOIA for that conversation would get literally every email in their, in their personal email account if they don't have it. So, I am with Mark, like, everyone should have their own email address associated with their town business. And I don't think a lot of people are gonna do that without us providing it for them. So, I don't, I mean, I, I don't think we, we have to, and I do think $30 a month for what is way more than we, this is way more than we would need for most people. But I do agree that it would be much cleaner and safer if everyone had their own address.
So, I think, yeah, I think if somebody, I think we could, we've talked before about the need for sort of onboarding for new, you know, committee members. And that can include a suggestion or a recommendation that they set up a separate, you know, town business email account for themselves. But I, I just don't think it's reasonable to include every single person who has any affiliation with the town whatsoever at $32 a month. And, you know, regardless of whether we can get that down, we'll probably, I mean, if we included everybody, we would get that down, probably, just because the pricing goes down per person when you have, you know, 500 versus 5,000.
Or the five or six trainings.
But, and that was my next point. The amount of time that Nancy spends chasing down folks about the necessary training right now, even with the number of addresses, the limited number of addresses we have, that's just not how I want our employees spending their time.
There's gotta be other, other service out there that could be made available for employees, and whether it's, you know, Google has them, I mean, there's, there's any number of alternatives that this can be for employees, but the town stuff, that's, I still think $32 is way too much, but.
That's a basic license.
Yeah, it's not even deep.
That's a basic license, that's $6.30. So, what you're really paying for is the, is the love, the multiple levels of.
Archiving and everything else.
Of the security, of the firewall and everything like that, the secure messaging.
Span filters, half of it.
You have, that's where you, the, the email filter, the Mimecast. And, and I had, I posed the same question, because I know that that has been a concern of like, let's dilute this a little bit, or in some way, shape, or form. And, and she actually had said, no, that's, that is, we, we can't risk ourselves on being infected by anything from the outside.
Yeah, but we're all outside, that's the problem. We are all outside.
Okay. IT, this is IT's recommendation, and they understand the scenario, they understand the situation with everybody's concerns, and ultimately, and this is, this is what.
We are all outside the town. We do not have access to the town drives. We do not have access to any town computer through an email system.
The only thing we can do is we can get fished or hacked, or through our email.
Which would be us getting fished or hacked, not the town. You personally, not.
We do have access to OneDrive.
Absolutely.
And viruses spread on email networks.
I have the access, I have access to the website.
That's completely independent of your town email address.
Yeah. No, I'm, I'm not inclined to second guess Nancy on that one. If she says there's a risk, absent really strong evidence to the contrary, I would, I would think that we would go with that, you know, with that assessment.
We're obviously a divided board, I'll make, I can make a motion.
Well, yeah, so let's talk about just the planning board, then.
Yeah, so.
Because that's what our, that's, that's what this topic is.
Right, so, the planning board requested, I guess, I'll call it personalized email addresses, town email addresses, so one for each individual member. The recommendation is to have a single email address, planning board at, that goes to Marin for her designee, and that person would forward it to the chair, who would distribute as needed.
We have a town planner now, and an assistant town planner, right?
Mm-hmm.
And you can, you can set up more than one surrogate. So, if it goes to Marin, it could also go to, is.
To Cooper.
Cooper, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that if one is out, and they, they can set up their own rules, hey, listen, I'm gonna be the first responder on any of these. But if you know I'm out, you jump on it. I mean, that's exactly what we do in our business. We have a bunch of different, you know, the ones for accounting, ones for, you know, there's all different. That a lot of people have eyes on, but there's one person that's responsible for it, until they say, hey, I'm out tomorrow. Keep an eye on the accounting folder.
Mm-hmm.
Or email it.
I think, I think in the interest of transparency, it would be better to give them each email address at LittletonMass.org. I think that it would help, it would, all of their stuff would be subject to, to, like, FOIA laws, like, open meeting laws. And, you know, right now, anybody can send an email anywhere and not, have it not be discoverable, because they say it isn't.
But they can do that anyway. We could do that with, a select board member could do that. Hey, don't email, just email my personal email. I mean.
Yeah, but it's just the integrity and the ethics. But if they're, if they're, it is, but if their public address that's published on the website and that they need to use for all official business is that address, it's gonna end up getting more traffic.
So, if I have my own personal Gmail address, Mark@SelectBoard, I can go and delete all my emails from Google and, before it's FOI-able, you can't do that when it's on the town system, so.
So, that's also, I guess.
But you're also signing, you're also taking ethics training and things that say, you don't do that. So, where are we at, where are we at? Are we just gonna stoop down to this point of?
I don't think the ethic training tells you what you can do.
Because I can do something, doesn't matter.
I don't think the ethic training tell you what you can and can't do with your emails.
It's understood from open meetings.
Well, I mean, even if it doesn't, like, but, but.
There is a discovery and destruction rules that apply to us, period, when it comes to emails like that. And that's the stuff that's FOI-able, Diane works with, you know, to include the.
Look, look, you're right, like, you can always get, you can always bend the rules and get by them. This would add another layer of accountability on top of what we have now. So, you know, it, it, belt and suspenders.
It's still a, to me, it's a, it's a risk reward, risk benefit, cost benefit. There's a lot of, to me, I'm just, I still lean the other way. That, this is just me working on secure networks my entire life. The fewer, the better. The less intrusion, the less issues you have, the less resources you have to put into it to track people down for the trainings and, and all these other things. And just, I think all of that outweighs the benefit, to me, personally, of a, a board that's going to rotate every, you know, three years, or two, every three or four years.
So, I, I think having, having personal email addresses, getting it, rescinding and receiving town business vastly increases the surface area that an attacker has access to, and actually is way less secure than, than a managed email address that has all of this protection built in. So, that's my opinion. I mean, you know, I, I am in favor of giving them all email addresses. I'm not saying that we need to immediately go out and provision, you know, 700 at $30 each, because we want to give one to every, to every sustainability member. But if a board comes to us and asks for it, I think we should, like, you know, give them the benefit of the doubt that they'll use it and, and allow them. It's 150 bucks a month.
I think there's gotta be a line on, with the selected boards, I mean, there's, there's gotta be a line.
We don't have one, we don't have a policy, so we're just sitting here, where do you, yes, someone watching this on another committee right now is gonna say, oh, of course I want a town email. I want it separate, I wanna keep everything separate. I get, I get the logic behind it. Every committee, every board, why wouldn't you want that? It's easy to separate the two.
So, but, but is your, and your, your objection is primarily monetary?
It's absolutely one of them.
Yeah.
Because it wasn't, we didn't plan for it.
Oh, yeah, no, I mean, I, I'm with you on that, the cost.
But the, at the end of the day, we haven't discussed a policy on, okay, let's look at this holistically, the whole, everyone, and say, who really needs it, and why? What, what's the, what do we, if, because if we're saying we want everybody that's on the town board or committee to have their own personal email, it makes sense in your brain, but what does, what does that open us up to? Now, the, the cost of that is enormous, if you were to do that. I mean, I don't even know how many boards and committees we have. So, you have to draw the line.
Thirty-seven.
Doesn't have personal emails. I mean.
PMBC.
In the business that seems to run, all of these, PMBCs and.
PMBC.
I know.
So, I'm, I mean, I'd have, I'm not convinced that the planning board needs individual emails, because I haven't witnessed, or I haven't, nothing's come to our attention that people aren't getting the information they need on the planning board. Marin seems to be doing a great job of distributing information. They've got an assistant now there that helps with this process. And I've got an IT professional office that's telling us where they stand. So, that's where I am, and I, I know we're all over the map on this, and I, I respect, very logical, some of the stuff you guys are saying.
Can I just clarify, Nancy's recommendation is only one email address?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
And I'm, I mean, I would, I'd be willing to look at a way to get to this, what you're talking about. That requires, you know, budgeting. And that would absolutely require an increased IT staff. You would need another individual. We're talking the monitoring of a lot more.
Yeah.
A lot more counts, and the chase, as we know, chasing the training down of who we have is ridiculous, but.
So, I guess, straw poll, who would vote for this right now? I would.
Yes.
For which?
For.
For, for giving an individual email, just this case, who, which of us would vote for five email addresses for the planning board? So, Mark and I are a yes. I'm curious what you three are.
I'm a no.
Yeah, I know.
I, I think they could have one address, and Marin could place it.
Okay.
Like I said, they could have multiple surrogates.
Yeah. And Karen, what do you think?
Um, I'm with a single address.
Okay.
Until we can come up with a proper policy and provisions about who's paying for what. I think if a committee member wants, you know, an email address, personalized email addresses, it might need to come out of their own budget, not IT.
It's the whole.
Okay.
You know, like, that's something that we should talk about in the future, obviously not tonight, but it's one, one way that we could.
You said policy, and what else?
I want, I wanna know, I want a policy, so that we can figure out who gets what, and under what circumstances, and who pays for it.
I mean, I, just like I said, I faced it, when I saw it, went to communities and saw it. I wanted to see where's this line of, and they start, who, when does the planning board start to get their own individual? It's a pretty large community, three times our size is the smallest I could find, 30,000 people.
16,000 people in Oxford?
Yeah.
What did Oxford do?
And we, we did not, we did not, Oxford did not assign individual emails, so.
Did you have one per committee, or board?
No, it would depend, the BOH, we, we had one, but still had staff similar to what's been recommended filtering on the material for.
I think, too, there's a lot to be said for trying the less complicated, less expensive option first. And let's see, you know, if the planning board comes back to us and says, this is a mess, it's not working for us, then absolutely, let's, you know, let's review that.
Yeah.
But having a board member say, I'm tired of using my personal email, I don't think is an excuse. I, I really don't. Because if I was, if I ran for the select board, and we had a collective email, and I had to count on Jim to get me the emails, I would still be on the select board.
Yeah, yeah.
That's not why I'm running, of course. So, is it a little bit of a hindrance? Sure, but.
Then I would argue that we shouldn't have them either.
Yeah. Well, not at that point, you can bring that motion up.
I'm, I mean, why are we special, more special than they are?
Because we have more business in front of us than most boards?
Every day, I mean.
How many emails do you get a day for this?
You're the chief, you're the chief legislative audience of the community, yeah.
PMBC conducts business for the town, and they don't, they have one email address that only the chair now can conduct business for the town, is what you're saying. It's so weird.
You're so multi-dimensional. You guys are just all over everything.
PMBC isn't.
Yeah.
And regardless of who's responsible, we're the ones that are gonna get the email anyway, right? Whether it's a planning board issue, or a PMBC issue, or a cemetery commission issue, we're the ones that get the email. It's just a question of who we talk.
I'm gonna stay with what you said. In lieu of, you know, put this on something where we, we look down the road to create a policy, the one that makes sense, with the issue that a board is bringing to us, we've got all these issues that we cannot resolve because we don't have individual emails, and, okay. Or it's gotten so crazy, my personal email box at home has got 100 emails to every one personal email. I just, that hasn't been, that wasn't raised in this.
Yeah, like, if, if they, you know, my Gmail account is so, is, you know, the one that I've set aside for, for town is so full, that I would have to pay extra for memory now, like, that's a consideration, for sure.
That doesn't seem.
Like I said, I would, I would prefer to start with the cheaper and less, and the recommended option before we decide that the recommended option doesn't work.
And then resource appropriately.
Who's writing the policy, and who's investigating what?
Yeah, I don't think it's a knee-jerk thing, we don't have to jump all over this, because.
Well, you said we, we're not doing something else until we have a policy, but no one's volunteered to write a policy, and no one's volunteered to.
Well, I don't see it as a pressing issue. I guess, it's, it's another thing that just.
The planning board sees it as a pressing issue, and we're telling them no, so.
I don't know.
Are we expecting them?
We're open to doing one email address for them, that's, that's.
That's not what they asked for. That's what Nancy's countered with. The planning board asked for individual emails, and we're telling them no.
And Karen's saying, let's try one and see how it goes.
Until we have a policy that no one's writing, and until we investigate something else. So, my question is, who's writing the policy?
Well, right now, we could say the policy that.
No, there is no policy.
The select board is the only board that has individual emails.
But that's not true.
I mean.
The charter committee does, Board of Health does, school committee does, the library does. If you're worried about light and water does.
Eating twice, twice a month, and that's an enormous amount, an enormous amount of emails that they have to go back and forth with and access to things, and they're gonna be dissolved in 18 months.
And there's a sunset.
I, I just, I. I, I just, I.
I think Board of Health should move over to this model as well.
They are.
Yeah.
I, I think, all right.
Let me ask Matthew a question. You, you mentioned that you have interactions with Mark. And I've never heard from any of the members of the planning board saying that they wanted an email address. Did Mark ever ask you?
No, no, but, no, no one has ever asked me about this email address directly.
Should we ask Nancy if the, if the whole board wants them or if one will suffice?
I mean, every, every time we.
If all five of them want it, it's a lot more than.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yep.
But I mean, I've had people, you know, just in my tenure, even on the finance committee, there's always one or two people that say, I want my, I want my town email. They just say, I want my town, they don't get it, but I just think so you're always going to have that. Of course, we're people.
Yeah, so to Chuck's, so to Chuck's point, let's find out who, how many people on the board really want it.
They might all say.
Well, I'm going to run you on that.
Yeah.
But.
Twenty percent of the board, maybe?
So I'm just, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion at this time until we, and Mark's gonna get on me, you're creating the policy, aren't you? And yes, I, you know, I will draft something if that's, it's not going to be by next week, we got a lot of business to take care of. But I think it just brings up another thing that, why is it this way? For some reasons, financially, sure, but why did I look at other communities and it's just not a thing? Where's, what's the, it can't be strictly financial, can't be. So maybe the security side, I don't know, or resourcing. I move that select board vote to disapprove the use of town email addresses for the planning board.
Do we want to move to set up a single address though?
That can be monitored by.
Can I do a second?
Would Myron be okay with that?
Absolutely, I asked him.
Can we make them separate motions?
We'll do a second, separate motion.
Yeah, let's make those.
We'll make them separate motions.
I'll, I'll stick with my motion.
Second.
Moved by Gary, seconded by Chuck. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion, cares. All those opposed?
No.
All right, three to two, the motion.
Now, move that.
They just, they just got us, got it by us, Mark.
Move that the select board vote to approve the use of a single collective email, is this how we're doing this?
Not a collective email, it's a single email.
It's just a single email address, yeah.
Move that the select board vote to approve a single email address for the planning board.
Town business.
For town business.
Second.
Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
That one's you.
Okay. Whoever had this issue on their bingo card is the most contentious. Until.
Kind of sprung up on us, let's be honest.
Until we got to the Long Lake discussion, which is next.
So, um, who, was everyone here for the, um, meeting that we had with the Conservation Commission about this issue?
When Chase introduced it.
Besides watching it.
Oh, did, did you watch it?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so you're familiar with what's going on.
Yeah.
So, so tomorrow night Conservation Commission is meeting to discuss this again, and it's the first time they've discussed it since our joint meeting. And Chase Gerby asked me to show up and like, because I'm a liaison, represent the select board's views on it. So I thought we could have a discussion, maybe it'll be brief, maybe it won't, about what we, you know, what, what's our stance on what we think that they should do. And I went and looked for precedents in other towns. And basically it varies. It goes from literally saying, uh, nothing, to the state has requirements, go look at them, to we encourage you to, to get a permit from the state, to you need to get a permit from us and from the state, to here is sixteen pages of boilerplate with a fee structure and you have to get it from us and this is when you have to take the docks out of the water and yada, yada, yada. So it's all over the place. The fees are like everywhere from forty-five dollars to two hundred per year. So most of them, most of the ones that have, um, that, that do require permits as an annual permit, you have to renew it every year. And several of them that I, that I looked at actually required you to pull the dock out of the water before the ice formed. So I know that some of those docks are permanent. So I think it's within our purview to do any of those things. Conscom is definitely, I think, more interested in the stricter end of the, of the scale. But there was no, not that I could have found it, there was no town where I found, you know, docks are completely prohibited. And the reason is probably because I'm, I wasn't looking at any towns that had conservation land with docks on them. Or at least that I could find in my, in my, you know, hour of Google searching. So that's where, so that's, you know, so I just, I want to hear from the rest of the board what you think we should say.
I mean, are we looking for two, two separate, I mean, obviously the select board, i.e. the town owned land versus conservation land? Are we trying to separate these?
No, I think, I think that Conscom is very interested in having it be consistent. And I, I mean, I think that would make a lot of sense.
Did you get to read a couple of it? I read quite a bit about this one. Obviously, there's a lot in our pack and a lot of people had input on this as well. You know, in watching the meeting and, I, I just try to sit all the way back and say, okay. What, what's, what's our end state here? Our, our goal is to allow as many people as possible to enjoy Long Lake. Do I think that there's some issues with, sure, if I buy a home that's in front of a lake and the town owns a sliver of land in front of it, sure, you shouldn't be able to sell your house saying you. You have, you know, I, you have a dock and all these things, sure, that shouldn't be part of it. But because that, your value of your house just increased by expression. So I believe that historical precedence has to play somewhere to me. We going back a hundred years? Pretty close.
I would say twenty to fifty, probably.
Yeah, where these.
Yeah.
These homes and houses have had access to some degree.
Yeah.
The first dads in, in the globe that said, come to Littleton, get a, get a lake lot.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
So they've had access. And it's turned into, yes, and people put a raft up there or a boat or whatever, and now the docks, all because the town failed to create some type of policy.
Right.
I mean.
Yeah.
Historically, was it ever really needed? I don't know.
I mean, I, I also look at it as like, is there damage being done? I know that there are cases where one of the owners put up signs saying it was private, it couldn't be private. But, but Chase said that was dealt with within a day of the, so I, I don't think, I don't think there's a lot of contention on the lakefront. I think it's really seems to be Conscom is split down the middle about what they want to do.
So if I'm, if I want to go over the lake, um, I don't know, and go fishing. Theoretically, I could walk out on one of those docks that somebody put.
They're all public, they're on public land, they're, they're all, they, they should all be accessible.
So that creates.
Even though they say private.
Well, so there was only one and that, that, I think that owner has taken the signs down and that, it shouldn't be an issue, is what Chase said.
I'm not saying something shouldn't be done because there is a liability that comes about. Let's just say somebody trips and falls through a dock because of it, I don't know, where does that go? It's not going to go on the home insurance policy of the owner of that house. Correct?
More to the point, the Wetlands Act, like the Conscom does have the right to say, nothing can be built, according to the state law, nothing can be built in this hundred foot buffer. We own this land, everything has to go. That, that is within their purview to say that. And actually, we couldn't do anything about it, it's there.
But we don't want them.
With pre-existing?
Yes, oh, absolutely, yes.
We, you know, we've had.
You can go, oh, it's, it's chapter nine, it's chapter ninety-one, like, and it's pretty, pretty.
So it just, I keep, from a select board member's point of view, I just keep falling back to, we have historical precedence here of people enjoying the lakefront. As far as I know, historically, without issue. Okay, so that, so that's one thing, actually, for me.
Why the sudden change?
Well, there's probably members of Conscom saying, well, this is protected land. And I, um, and that, that is a big piece to this for sure, but how can we regulate or at least what people put there? Are we talking about removable docks? Are we talking about, maybe not, but are we talking about things that, um, keep into mind the issues that conservation has? You know, that prevent, they're not, I don't know, obviously no motorized.
Yeah.
Type things, but I'm just trying to think of other things that conservation might have an issue with. This, this one is really tough, but I'm gonna be, I am still, I am hung up on, we have a historical precedence with no real issues besides, hey, that's not your property, get your signs off it. Get your garbage out of, you know, we can set up policy for that type of thing, has to have some type of a neat appearance or when it comes to somebody who, you know, conservation's attention. You know, they have rules where there's too much, what is the rules the conservation has when there's too much junk in someone's yard or, you know, a, a barn collapses and it's a nuisance.
It's a nuisance, right, right, right.
Those type of things, they still have control over it, but I, it's hard for me because I did listen to conservation and I understand some of those issues. But I think there's a common ground here where we, we as a board can keep access for these people to enjoy the lake that they bought homes and they live right in front of. And while creating some, some policy, we have to have something that is going to allow, um, the use to be safe and to be uniform to some degree. Docks can, you could get into that if you want, you know, I don't know.
So we've got two, at least two in these pictures that are marked private and one that's got a tow away zone, no parking sign, nailed into the tree.
Well, that, that can be addressed.
Yeah, and it will be, I'm sure, but just saying it's more than one.
Yeah.
I think we need to consider that, you know, if it's public, if we're allowing the public to put in docks, then anybody in town could build a dock anywhere they want along Long Lake. There's nothing, you know, I mean, I don't, and I don't think any of us want to see that happen. I understand that folks bought near and at Long Lake for, you know, the views and for the access and the ease of access and that's great and they will still have it. But this is public land and they don't have any more claim to the right to build a dock than anybody else in town. So I, I think we do need some sort of permitting process just for that reason alone. And I think the permitting process is also, would help us from a liability standpoint, it would include indemnification clause, for example. I don't see the need for us to, you know, tell people when to pull up the docks if they want to leave them in, I guess. And I'm assuming that would make them deteriorate faster, but assuming the permits require that things be maintained in good condition. I do, I do think that, I do think we should follow Conscom in terms of require, in terms of, you know, what's harmful. You know, I think if you're cutting down trees and if you're getting rid of vegetation and you're, you know, paving over areas or, you know, putting stones down or what have you. You know, that's, and Conscom says, you know, these are the things that will cause damage to the lake, then I think we should follow their lead on that.
Okay. I think also, I recall, um, there was a general sentiment that almost everybody who had a dock is perfectly fine with there being permitting process.
There's ten, it looks like there's ten right now.
Uh, nine, I think.
Nine docks.
Nine and one on our, one on our land.
So I think there should be an annual permit, whether they require them to pull it out every year, that's a Conscom decision. I think there should be better signage down there that's basically says, it's Long Lake Park, so that people know that we own it, not that it's not private land, that it's public land. I think by having the annual permitting process, we can have an annual inspection process to say what docks are safe and what is required and have better control and like, and, you know, let people know that you put a dock in, but it is a public.
If it's in disrepair.
It's pu, it's a public dock, other people can use it.
And we can't allow public docks to be dangerous.
Right.
Yeah, that's fair.
So, um, but I, I think we can let Conscom decide whether or not the docks are required to be removed every year or anything like that. That should be more in their purview.
Okay.
But I do think there just generally needs to be signs up there that say, Long Lake Park. So that people know that it's public.
Yeah. Chuck?
This is a.
Yeah, I mean, I, I. We've got people that certainly their, their home value is tied to whether appropriately or not appropriately to frontage and if they have docks. But I, I agree with everything you just said, and the permitting process, I think, is exactly the way you do that as far as protecting our pine quarters. Because if, if we do it, so that's gonna put more burden on us, but the permitting process will cover that. But if Henry or whomever, if we have a harbor master, the harbor master goes out and inspects the docks, we've got plausible deniability at that point. Those docks were permitted to that house across the street and, um, I, I understand the rationale behind it being a public, public structure. Someone wants to take the liability on of having other folks fishing off their dock and, I mean.
But it's not their liability.
Making burgers on their dock.
It's our liability.
Not if it's, not if it's. If the permitting process calls it up.
Okay, okay, I see, if you're going, so right now, there's nothing stopping you from going and building a dock and putting it right in front of somebody's house?
Right.
Correct. I can give you a lot of reasons why I won't be doing it.
So, so strictly speaking, the state law prevents it.
Right.
There is no, there is no, there's no like carve out, we, we would have to create a carve out to allow docks.
So you would call, you would do, you would do boat slots, you'd say, these are all the, these are the slots that people could actually do.
I mean, I don't, I think that that is the kind of detail that we're gonna have to discuss or Conscom is gonna have to decide, do we just leave the legacy ones there? Do we allow a certain number, do we, and then you can trade or whatever, I don't know, but.
Build a marina.
Yeah.
I'm trying to think how some, I know this happens, some other lakes or ponds where they have.
Like Pete, the certain number and then.
Grattan's got a couple of them.
Huh?
Grattan's got a couple of them.
But are they, but are the people that have the frontage, not necessarily the frontage, it's owned by the town, but this is a unique.
So we can, we can go to, um, Fort Pond.
That's private, those are all private frontages.
To the lake's edge.
Yeah.
To the water's edge.
So we'd be completely, completely.
But they still, but they still follow the same permitting, should follow the same permitting process.
Is Fort Pond a great pond?
Yes.
Okay.
All, all the.
Everything but Mill Pond is.
Everything but Mill Pond, according to Jared Cavallo's application.
That's right.
But, um, the, Conscom can require permits for all docks on all great ponds. Right?
Or can deny, deny theoretically, deny any on all great ponds.
And do you give, you know, do you give access or you give priority to residents that, right in front of their homes is a dock or in that neighborhood when they, you know, or is it just a free for all in the bidding process?
Honestly, like, I think that is not, may, may not be a question for us, that may be a question that, that Conscom has to decide as they decide how to do the permitting process. I mean, we could, we could certainly have an opinion on it.
We have to get a bottle of butter with them so many feet or something.
Or something, but like that, that, you know, they're gonna have to work that out. I, I just wanted to get a sense from this board of like, where we're at between the extremes of absolutely no docks and do whatever you want. And it sounds like we're generally coming down on, there should be a limited number and we should really have a permitting process to protect ourselves. And it should be public for everybody and it should be clearly marked as such.
And if Conscom just came out and said, remove all the docks and it's.
There's nothing we could do about it. I mean, there'd be one left, it's the one that we have, that the select board owns the land on.
But technically, they could make that one come out too, because it's still.
So Tom Harrington, Tom Harrington said that, um.
Right.
If we wanted.
Right.
Could build two or three docks.
The state owns the land under the water and so it would be a state.
But it's still a Wetlands thing.
Yes, slips, thank you. Yeah, you break this down into slips.
So, so I think I have enough for the meeting tomorrow night. I'm not gonna make, I won't, I won't make any decisions.
Can I confuse the issue?
Yeah.
More?
Yeah. It's my favorite thing, please.
So, I mean, one of the things that are, a couple of things that were also highlighted here that, that will have to be addressed is the talking about, and I know the, the damage to, that was one of the concerns of Conservation Commission, the damage to the, to the lake, to the, to the shore and stuff like that. So one thing.
the, to the lake, to the, to the shore, and stuff like that, so one thing you're gonna have to look at is the watercraft, I mean, here you have, you've got a picture of a rowboat that is, that, you know, his boats are pulled up onto the shore, and, and, and put it amongst it, so I don't know if that's doing damage to the, to the shoreline, but be prepared to, that will, that will be a concern also.
Yeah, I think, I think for me, that would be the same as, as the other things where, you know, I think we should follow CONSCOM's lead on determining what would be harmful, they're in a, they're in a better position to be able to, to know what, what those things are.
Okay, and who's the police of this?
No, that's a good question.
Rob, Rob said, are you the chief of this?
You're gonna please it.
You got a booklet from me earlier today.
No, he did, no, and you, very, some very good points you shared, so thank you.
Can I, am I allowed to speak?
Traditionally? Because we have your comments that you already sent.
No, I, I won't be repeating them.
Yeah.
Far from it, I appreciate the conversation that just took place, and Matthew, I know from previous discussion, you've listened in on some of the CONSCOM earlier statements that were, that were directionally not listened to public whatsoever, get the docks out, get them, they would have been out by now, based on some of the members' comments, so your discussion with regard to precedents, and where you're directionally at with docks, completely separate from all the watercraft and all that type of stuff, I'm not disagreeing, with regard to docks, if you're of that opinion, I would just ask, will you be sharing that?
Yes, that, that's the reason, that's the reason we had this discussion.
Right.
Is that I, I'm gonna attend a CONSCOM meeting, Chase asked me to present.
As recently as several hours ago, an email came out stating that, realize that there's only 15 minutes on the agenda, and so many of you aren't gonna be allowed to speak, and I know of enough people that I expect to be on the call, to know that virtually nobody's gonna be able to speak, and so your perspective could diffuse, or at least expand on the discussion to realize, select board has one thought pattern with regard to historical precedents, and aspect of an annual permit process, that I would say is diametrically the opposite of the previously communicated items, and I think that's important to residents, one of the remarks that I'll end with, is you've taken in, and I appreciate what you've done, you realize how, how difficult and stressful this topic is to many people in the neighborhood, and it's not just the people that have the docks, it's many people like me that don't have a dock, but yet it's part of my community, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Can we pass on, or through Matthew, just that, I don't think anybody's hair needs to be on fire about this, this has been this way for almost 100 years, so let's think this through, and if we have to hold more meetings, they don't have to make this massive decision tomorrow, do they?
No, I, I mean, I don't think so, I, you know, all I know is this is the follow-up to the discussion that we had here with them.
Which is good, but I think...
With Chase.
Request the nominee.
We can really, we can really, with CONSCOM, really water out some of the details on making this, making the community proud, I think, on both sides, I really do.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, wealth is preserved, and CONSCOM's concerned.
I hope that, you know, there would be a joint meeting at some point, before we, you know, before any actions taken.
Glad they're including us in the one discussion.
Yeah, it's, it's great if we can all get on the same page and have one consistent policy, I think that's a really important goal, and I appreciate it.
One of those where you wanna go, I need to go down and actually look.
Yeah.
Just walk around.
Yep.
Okay, thank you all for that input.
Thanks.
Ooh, now we get to assign articles for special town meeting.
Chuck, 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 Chuck.
I'm in, put me in, Coach.
Depends, do you want him to pass it?
Come on, man.
All right, so for Article One, the way that this is working out is that the Shaker Lane Building Committee is going to have a fairly extensive presentation, and that's gonna be by Steve Benudi, and then Tim was saying that he is expecting just a couple minutes from each of the other committees that are involved, so Finance Committee will get their time, Select Board would get their time, anybody else? That's it, right, School Committee, School Committee would get their time, but that would only, that would be, you know, under five minutes, closer to three, I think, is what Tim said.
Yeah, three minutes.
So, I'm happy to take that one, I'm happy to...
No objection from me.
All right.
Second one, too, then, I don't think that's a lot, that kinda goes with it.
All right, bills of prior years.
This is typically a...
So we have the amended one also.
Yep, I'm gonna take that one, too, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, the bills of prior years requires a 910, so I think we pull that one out by itself, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, usually.
I'll take that one.
Yeah, of course, we're... I mean, that may be on the consent agenda.
But it's 910s.
He likes to go with all the two-thirds, just the majorities.
It's a separate amount.
Oh, he does, makes sense.
The bills of prior years need a 910 approval.
These are all fire department, as you know, so however you want to do it.
Article Four, fund collective bargaining agreement.
Gary.
Authorized transfer from trust funds, Article Five.
Chuck.
Okay. Accept the alternative procedure for abandoned funds.
I don't have one, I'll, I'll take that one. That's gonna be consent agenda, anyway.
Bylaw amendment to change the Hawker peddler law.
I definitely want that.
Chuck, you want that one?
My high school team was the Hawks, so, that's either the Peddlers, Drake May was at the Zavarian CM football game on Friday night.
Nothing to do with...
He's a Hawk.
Thirty-six King Street, transfer from the stabilization fund.
Sure, that's what it is.
Bylaw amendment regarding posting of warrant.
Sure, I'll take that one.
All right. Increased income limits for senior tax deferral program, that's you, Gary, or Chuck?
I'll do it.
Gary should get the next one.
I already wrote it.
Director of Veteran Services.
I get it.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it's not, even though it's, it doesn't really affect...
No.
But it's, it's a title change, but I have to recuse myself from it.
The term.
I can do that, or Chuck, you want it?
Sure, I'm tapping from here, though.
All right, bylaw amendment regarding director of finance and budget position title.
Yeah, I can do it, yeah.
Resolution on climate action and resilience for the town of Littleton.
Do we, that's not one of our articles, though.
No, that's Sustainability Committee.
It's listed as ours, though, I think.
Okay, take it.
You want it, Mark?
Yeah.
Bylaw, debt exclusion override, financial management reserve fund, oh, that's citizens, so none of us will take that one, all right, so I've got, in order, Karen, Karen, Mark, Gary, Chuck, Matthew, Chuck, Matthew, Mark, Chuck, Chuck, Gary, Mark, nobody.
So the citizens petition, if it goes through, which I don't know, I was gonna be pulled.
Oh, I hadn't heard that, but...
Sounds like it's going to be pulled, but if it isn't, I know there was some strong opinions from this board and the finance.
So then, then we can speak on it, right?
Okay, we're just, address if that happens.
A strong opinion, I know Steve Benudi has a strong opinion.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good, that was easy.
Okay.
Now, I'll probably lose this between now and then, I'll forget.
Please hold, send it out, right?
Yes, absolutely, thank you.
Discuss the 40B application from Habitat for Humanity for eighty-seven Tahatuan Road.
So I'll take this one, so Habitat, so we go back far enough, when we bought the Brownswood properties five or six years ago now...
Two-acre lot.
There was a 1.6 acre lot that was carved off for affordable housing, the Affordable Housing Trust contributed funds to help purchase Brownswoods in exchange for that lot, after many years and much pain, they, we issued, the Affordable Housing Trust issued an RFP that Habitat for Humanity was the, the...
Winning respondent.
Winning respondent of, and we sold them the lot for a dollar, the RFP was to build a duplex on that property, which is, the idea behind the duplex was to get two families into an affordable, in Littleton, what no one on the Affordable Housing Trust realized is that duplexes aren't allowed in Littleton, because they're duplexes, we only allow single-family houses, so Habitat was in front of the ZBA last Thursday, who was not, the general feeling was the ZBA was not looking favorably on allowing an exception for the, for the duplex, Habitat is exploring other possibilities of how they can go forward with this, and would like a, one possibility is doing a friendly 40B, there's a couple others that they're exploring, they would like a vote of support from the select board that we are in favor of building it, deeply affordable duplex.
Do we do 10 tiny houses?
Huh?
Do we do 10 tiny houses?
So, so the other thing that they, they said, in addition to getting two families in, is for them, the, the financials work out better.
Absolutely.
Because they have such, they have such a low interest rate, and they hold the note, I think, for the 20 years, they want two mortgage incomes instead of just one, so, so they say they typically, and it varies, but they usually can't make single-family, family homework.
Just to clarify...
They definitely have.
So, they said they would have a very difficult time making a single-family homework on that site, because the site work is quite expensive.
It's quite expensive.
If you've ever walked that property, there are so many invasives, we walked, I walked it with CONSCOM, Con, they needed a very, they're within the 1500-foot buffer zone, we tried to walk it with CONSCOM last week, there were so many invasives that it's, yeah, you went from, pick your invasive, it's there, we went from the barberries that, and the roses that sticky like crazy, to trying to go under honeysuckle bushes.
It was worse by, before we actually took down the house and everything, it was worse, it was terrible, Jim O'Neill's done a good job of getting out there.
So zoning hasn't ruled on it?
Zoning has not ruled on it.
So what happened was, the representative from Habitat asked for a straw poll, and when it became clear that, that they, that they weren't going to, to approve it, he asked for a continuation of the hearing, so zoning has not ruled on it, but I think if they had voted that night, they would not have approved it.
They needed a, they needed a...
Four out of four.
Four out of four.
Okay, so, just to clarify, the exception that they want is written into the zoning by law, this is an exception that's already established, and they just won't apply it?
There's...
It's not, it's not just, don't make us subject to the zoning by law.
Yeah, well, it's, it's, don't make us subject to the single-family rule, that's what, it's a use variance, is what they call it.
Okay.
So we're asking them to vary the rules on that single-family rule to allow two-family household.
But aren't there pre-established reasons to...
So, there are, I'm sorry, go ahead.
To grant a variance?
Yeah, like, there's a bunch of them, and the hardship is, typically you need to demonstrate hardship, and some of the hardship examples they gave are, the terrain is too difficult for us to build a house in seventy...
Shape and topography.
Like, shape and topography, and then, you know, I, I think...
There's financial hardships.
Financial hardships and so forth, so we would argue that this was definitely a financial hardship.
Yeah.
I mean, outside of Habitat, maybe, from being a great organization that does this, I didn't see the RFP, I didn't see the responses to the RFP, is this the feel of, you know, it was obviously written wrong.
It was clearly, they clearly missed that, yeah, so not only us, but also the planning board, which saw it, and...
And town council.
And town council, all missed the fact that there was no duplex allowed, so, whoops.
So I'm, I'm actually, I'm torn between going back out on an RFP and seeing...
They were the only respondent, Habitat was the only.
They were, okay, that was the next question.
That, Habitat is basically built, the plans they submitted is for a 2,200-square-foot duplex, 1,200 in one unit and 1,000 in the other, it's a pretty small, three-bedroom, one three-bedroom unit, and then a two-bedroom, senior-ready, ADA-accessible unit.
I know, it's almost, I, I wish they would just build a home and an accessory dwelling in it with this, because then you, now you need our zoning.
That's one of the possibilities they're looking at, so...
If this doesn't, if the zoning won't allow a duplex, that's something they would consider doing.
They're, they're, they are looking at everything, they're, they're just asking for, you know, basically our support.
They just want us to, to say, we, we support you, you know, we support you trying to build a two-family house here, a duplex.
I mean, I, I, yes.
Okay, I mean, I'm in favor, obviously.
I, I mean, I'm sitting, I'm sitting here, I didn't watch the zoning meetings, I don't know what their mindset was to, for an absolute, probably a no on a straw poll, just because of precedents, they don't want to get into this, I understand that.
The argument was, they didn't want to set a precedent, and...
This is a unique...
Our response was that this is such a narrow precedent, it's a deeply affordable, senior, deed-restricted forever, like 60% or less AMI house, like, let's, let's set that precedent, by all means, like, I want more of those in Littleton.
Chuck, did you have something?
I was gonna say, I mean, they could try to wedge it in there so that they, they get the soil conditions, the shape, or the topography, but that's, that's more about why, why you're placing it closest to setback and that kind of thing, the other leg, or reason you can approve an appeal is, doesn't derogate from the intention of the bylaw, does, you know, so they're, I think they're going with black and white, and the, the zoning board of appeals, so there's always gray when you're, you know, you're granting a variance, and we do have, there's no precedent within an abatto, one abatto, so if there, if three houses next to it were duplexes, but then we changed the bylaws and we can't do it anymore, then grandfather by chapter 40 would be able to do it, because it's, one abatto, one abatto, already, already is not in compliance, but they, again, we do have duplexes in Littleton, not a bunch of them, but we do have a few, so I think that if we can try to appeal to their senses, it makes sense, and Matthew just nailed it, it's such a narrow precedent to be set, yeah, but I think that it...
Yeah, the only other place this could possibly be a thing in the near future would be the dirky.
Yeah, that's right.
Right, which, wouldn't be a bad place, would it?
And frankly, there's no precedent, you can't press, you can't set a precedent with an appeal, a decision to a variance is not a precedent, it's not precedent-setting.
Well, I mean, their argument is, well, the next time someone, some developer comes to us asking to build a duplex, he's gonna point to this and say, you allowed it there.
Every case stands on its own merit.
I understand, yeah.
So, do you guys, you want a motion to support a variance that we're looking for here?
Just a motion to support building a two-family house, is that right?
Vote to the select, or recommend...
Move.
Move, that the select board, vote to support the building of a two-family duplex structure at...
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven Tahatuan Road.
Second.
Requesting a variance.
Second.
Moved by Gary, seconded by Matthew, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, let's go discuss.
It's your time to shine, Jim.
Let's hear it.
Well, I'm gonna set a precedent, okay?
You are truly unprecedented.
Thank you, I think, just, just a few things, some, some really impressive things, but, so we've got the, as you know, the, the team at the, over at the library has been, has absorbed the overflow from the closure of the Westford Library, which is gonna be for two years, so that has increased their foot traffic by 700 people a month.
Is that Westford getting renovated, or something?
Yeah, for two years, they'll, they'll be down, there is also the flashers up at Goldsmith, the last set, they'll be installed on Wednesday, the, there was an assessment for renewing the police department's accreditation, that's gonna be starting in April, so they already are accredited, which is very impressive, so this is their renewal, so they will be going through that, Wednesday, there is a climate action plan presentation for some town staff, specific, specific departments, that's by Michelle... That's by Michelle Zelenka, the Regional Consultant through Northern Minister's Council of Governments.
That's Thursday, right? Thursday, not Wednesday?
It's the 23rd. That's Thursday? Thank you, I'm sorry. Uh, on Wednesday is the stormwater, we're having a, an internal team meeting with Ty and Barn about our stormwater asset management plan, which is, which is also important. So, uh, a few of the, few of the big things, uh, we have Grotton, uh, they are on the site, they are fully mobilized at the site where the satellite emergency facility will be going. So they are rocking and rolling right out of the gate.
That's the UMS.
Yes, sir.
Medical facility.
Exactly.
Wow.
Helport and room for expansion as they expand services, it is a, it's a, it's a trauma center, it's, it's emergency. It is something that is, is viewed upon that, um, if there is a necessity after you become stable, that you look to have to stay for a couple of days or anything, that's when they will transport you to, to a hospital. But, uh, it is, uh, you know, full-on emergency center. Had that, we had that. And last but not least, uh, we had, as you all know, we had our barn call last week, the finance team, and, uh, it is, uh, I'm, I'm very, very thrilled to report, thank you to the Select Board, thank you for the FinCom and the finance team, we are maintaining our AAA, the highest barn rating, um, rating you could get.
Dr. Mosslech.
Did, yes. So, very impressive, so give yourself a pat on the back, and Finance Committee and the finance team, outstanding job, and it's great. Fantastic, and that's it.
I did have a quick question on Ty and Barn. So what, what, why, why do we meet with them when it comes to the stormwater?
Stormwater, it's just, it's, they're our consultants for our stormwater plan and just, and just making sure we're in compliance.
Oh.
Correct.
I thought we were in compliance.
We are.
Always changing.
Oh, oh, it's a constant, especially with this administration, yes.
Okay.
Minutes.
There was one thing that was a little odd. At the end of the, um, public input, there was a, there was a paragraph about discussions of email addresses for town boards. Did we have that discussion during, during our, our members' update? You weren't, Chuck, you and Gary were both absent from this. Because I, I don't remember, maybe we did talk about it, but I don't remember...
Maybe Sue's clairvoyant, she knew that we were gonna discuss it.